Hearing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Yes, sorry, the roll. Didn't he say roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, here.
I know.
Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all. Under public acknowledgements, I would like to welcome Troop Eight, Cranston Boy Scouts, who I hear this evening, working for their citizenship and community merit badge, with their troop leader, former minority leader and city councilman, Randall Giacavone. I guess they're outside. Oh, you're out there. Please stand and be recognized, guys. Are there any other public acknowledgements or commendations? Councilman, Senator Maria.
Council President, I think the Babe Ruth team is outside there. I don't know why. Can we invite them in? We have citations for them. I was right.
Boy Scouts are so quiet, those baseball teams are. In the World Series, I guess. Councilman Senator Maria, would you do the honors?
Thank you, Council President. As I always say, when something like this happens, Cranston is the city of champions, and I am proud to recognize the Cranston Babe Ruth Fifteen-Year-Old League for winning not only the Rhode Island State Championship and the New England Regional Championship for the third straight year, but placing in fifth place in the World Series in Loudoun County, Virginia. A great accomplishment for this league, and John, is John here? John, come on up. I want to congratulate you on behalf of the City Council. We have citations for each of the boys, but tell us a little bit about what happened.
Well, this group of boys from the guy have been together for the past three years. They've got thirteen-year-olds who did a couple of five championships. What they did was, they wanted to save that year in 2011, they went to region again, because that was overregional, and they went to opening the bar. And they came very close to home, and this was just finished, and they're going two and two. And we had a very good showing, and we're kind of, we did the other comparison between what they looked like then and now, and we're looking at some video right now. 2012, the team spoke to Mike Royce, they matched, they lost in the region, and that was turning point with this group, turned everything around last year. I think they came in a little confident, and what they did previous year, they were doing it in a role, 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 and now probably the lowest point they've reached in the past couple of years. This year, we helped, we managed this great patient myself, they just quote, undefeated in the states, put through regional, they beat a very good team in downtown Connecticut, in Ranford, Massachusetts, and ended up going to Virginia during the fourth quarter, it was a very nice trip. I think the parents did a great job getting kids down there, they got a nice train ride for ten and a half hours, approached, and they had fifteen kids, so it was quite a highlight. But when we went down there, it was a very, very determined, they opened up against the Lady Tore of Jersey, a team we've seen before, they beat seven to one, and facing Loudoun County, full start after that, and ended up moving on first game in the whole tournament, eight to one. And after that, they ended up beating a very good team, Calhoun, and a Washington County team, six to five, where they ended up going from pool play to the quarterfinals, and they ended up having a basic team from Saginaw, Michigan, and unfortunately, came up short by one run, we lost four to three in seven. Ryan and myself, Coach Ben, thought, oh, at that point, if they got past Sacramento, Michigan, I think we had a very good chance to beat California in the next game, because I'm pretty much really well against that, and hopefully face Loudoun County, but fortunately, that didn't happen. But, so, we ended up finishing fifth in country, and it's an accomplishment these boys, I don't think that's something yet, but it's something that they are going to take on from this day going forward. This journey ends, a three-year span, where this team went twenty-six and six, something that hasn't happened in the city in quite some time, and these boys really should know that, that's an accomplishment, not many teams have done. I wish these young men very well, and hope that their next journey, when they play in high school and college, is good, not better than what they just accomplished here. Tonight's an honor for all of us, the coaches and the parents, and I really appreciate the counsel, what you guys are doing for tonight.
Guys, please.
Could the guys please stand? Ladies and gentlemen, the Rhode Island State and New England Regional Champions from the great city of Cranston, Rhode Island.
Oh, we have to suspend the rules before we go any further, can we, Troy, in a second?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Housewoman Lee?
Yes.
Congressman Stychos?
Yes.
Congressman Bob?
Yes.
Congressman Akado?
Yes.
Congressman Sido?
Yes.
Congressman Vivekio?
Yes.
Congressman Frere?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yes, Councilman.
On the resolution, Council President, this was, was the result of the Flood Commission meeting of October, where Mr. Mason testified that the flooding was a direct result of clogged catch basins on Oaklawn Avenue, failure of the state to remove the debris in the catch basins. So it's just a, basically to put the state on notice and make them aware of their negligence, and if possible, reimburse the city of Cranston for the fire and the rescue and other safety support units that responded to the flooding.
Under discussion, Mr. Kirschenbaum?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, I think that we have an email from Director Mason, and I think maybe we're taking different sides of this, but however, the director said that the city staff did conduct an investigation of our own catch basins, and found that there were no impediments in our own catch basins. The director is concerned with the wording on the resolution, in that we never did an investigation of the state drains, and the resolution indicates that we have proof that they did not clean them, and therefore they were negligent, which of course, the director denies saying or implying.
Any other discussion? Councilman Sido?
Through the chair, to either Evan or Councilman Akado, did the state do their own investigation? Do we know?
I do not know that. I'm going to check with Director Cordy. Not to our knowledge.
Councilman Akado?
It may very well be true, and I don't, I don't, I don't think the administration supports the state not doing their fair share, but I don't think we can say at this point emphatically that there's a causal relationship between the state acting and flooding.
So did somebody from the state do a final report? Or did we ask them for any documented proof that they maintain those drains, since it was their responsibility?
I can ask the director for further comment on that, but I'm responding to an email that the director had sent to us.
But indeed, in fact, it is true that the state, because it's a state road, needs to maintain those drains, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, to Mr. Kirschenbaum, Evan, would, if we offered a friendly amendment to take out the word "failure to maintain," and just ask the state to reimburse for the flooding, would that take the sting out of the...
Specifically, in the one, two, three, the fifth paragraph, line, starting on line number thirty-four to thirty-seven, the director denies that they had conducted an investigation of the state system. What he's saying is that the city staff did conduct an investigation of our own system, and found no blockages or impediments to the flow of water in our own storm drain.
So it would take considerable amount of change in the language to make it...
Well, I, I think if you turn it positive, to say that the, perhaps the state has to maintain its storm drains and report to the city of its scheduling, but, you know, I'm not the author of this, I'm just factually telling the committee, the council, that the director's saying he did not conduct an investigation of the state.
Councilman Stychos?
I wonder if I could ask the sponsor if he would object to it being, being sent to committee?
Well, first of all, it's only, it's a resolution, so it has no teeth in it. Basically, it's a statement by us to encourage the state to do its due diligence. Now, we are aware that an incident did occur on Oaklawn Avenue, a tremendous flood, flooding occurred. Our people checked our catch basins, and from my understanding of the administration, they were clean by a process of elimination what caused the severe flooding. We really don't know, have that answer as of yet, but if it wasn't our catch basins, I mean, I don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure that out.
Well, it could have been too much water all at once, in anybody's catch basin.
But if the administration has a problem with this, I don't mind if we wait and find out the facts that occurred. So if you want to send it back to the committee, fine with me.
I can request, Councilman Sido, those answers to the questions, if you'd like. I can request, Councilman Sido, the answers to the questions that you posed tonight, about what communications we've had from the state on that particular issue.
Well, that...
Councilman Sido?
Thank you, Mr. President. To, through the chair, to Evan and to the rest of the council members, that doesn't really, the resolution doesn't concern me as much as the fact that we have another government agency that is supposed to be working and doing certain things for the public good, where we don't know, you know, if, when, and if, if there's a schedule when they clean those drains or whatever. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if we could do a by ordinance to force them to give us notice. I probably think we can, because it's a state agency. So, I mean, whatever the rest of this council would like to do, I just think that the resolution is a good first step, but we need to go further and put some teeth on, you know, this so it doesn't happen again. You know, I mean, it's very odd. I mean, there's a number of problems here that I don't know if, unfortunately, I came to the Flood Committee meeting late this month, but my investigation has shown that, that bike path, now, we have care, custody, and somewhat control of that bike path, but if you go over that bike path, how many troughs and streams and, and, and whatnot are there that aren't there anymore, that people who are landowners have blocked or whatnot, has DEM gone there and done the inspection? So I mean, I think this is a good first step, and if anybody wants to change the wording, that's fine, but I think we need to go deeper into this, because, you know, there's a question of jurisdiction on the maintenance of those waterways there, if it's us or if it's DEM. There's also a question of, you know, I would really like to ask DEM, you know, when was the last time, and what the schedule is, not just for Oaklawn Avenue, but there's other state roads in the city that I'm sure DEM hasn't taken care of, and they should be at the Department of Transportation. So if they want, everybody wants to put it in committee, that's fine. Councilman Akado, whatever you want to do, it's fine.
Yeah, I don't mind sending it back to committee. I think it needs further study.
And if, you know, I think you just hit the tip of the iceberg, and I think we can't rest here. I think we have to dig, 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 until we get the right answers, so that we become proactive and it doesn't happen again, rather than reactive.
Councilman Senator Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I agree with Councilman Sido. Fletcher Avenue was a state road, and obviously, everyone knows the flooding we've had there over the years, and I don't think they maintain that road either. I have constituents calling after the floods, there's debris all over the road, and our guys have to clean it up. So I wouldn't mind putting this in committee so we could vet it further. Thank you.
Mr....
Councilman Sido?
With, as a matter of fact, when we had the floods, last time I was on the council, I remember going to a meeting with the Public Works Director then, the Director of Administration, Carlos, and whatnot, and there were certain drains that the state was supposed to take care of there, that they hadn't done in three to five years, and they admitted it, you know, that they hadn't done it for three to five years. So, you know, again, let's, you know, good, great start, let's go ahead and make sure that we do better.
Councilman Akado?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to send it back to committee for further study.
Second.
Which committee?
I would assume this would go to Ordnance Committee?
How about Public Works?
Public Works is fine, whatever.
Motion made, second. Any discussion on the motion? I would like to make one comment. Oaklawn Avenue, Dean Parkway, there were all kinds of city employees, fire, police, all from the city of Cranston. That's to my knowledge. There was nobody in the state at those sites during that catastrophe. Same thing with Fletcher Avenue over the years. It's always the city of Cranston that comes in, with our fire department, our police department, nobody from the state ever shows up, and they're all state roads. So the state is lacking in their due diligence, no matter how you cut it. Enough said. Please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, we have a resolution on federal emergency management. We have to make a motion to suspend Rule Thirty-Four?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. This resolution of the City Council to the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency to appear at a public hearing of the City Council regarding the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of nineteen twelve. This was sponsored by Councilman Akado. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, this is requested by a constituent, we have Mr. Dupont in the audience, but also, this was passed by the Warwick City Council, basically to discuss on the federal level affordable flood insurance. I think it's a good start. I think we need to pass this and work in unison with the city of Warwick.
Any other discussion?
I don't believe we had the motion on the floor.
Oh, motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. As a member of the Flood Committee, I heard all of the issues that have come up, and I certainly will concur with the chairman of that committee that if we can get someone from the state and, and the federal government to at least explain this to us, because I think that there are going to be some major impact on this, the new insurance rates for flood insurance, and the areas that are required to carry flood insurance. So I think it would be good if we're able to do that. So I will support the motion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Report of committees, ordinance committee?
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance eight dash thirteen dash seven, ordinance and amendment of Title Ten, Chapter Forty, the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Traffic Regulations for Specific Streets, Crosswalk at Gansett Avenue North Side of Intersection with Appleton, Continued Nine Twenty-three, Two Thousand and Three. Motion to approve?
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Akado?
It's before us, and this is also a result of a petition from a number of constituents who live on Berkeley and Appleton. There's a playground at Coliseum Field, so we have a number of elementary and junior high school students utilizing Coliseum Field and the playground, and a number of citizens cross at that area. However, the administration has notified me that Mr. Von Key does have a problem with this crosswalk, because possibly two, three, four blocks away is the crosswalk at Gansett where Ub Bayne is. And that is a secure crosswalk, because there is a, a crosswalk attendant there. However, that crosswalk is only utilized possibly seven months, maybe eight months of, of the year, from September to June, when Ub Bayne School is open for use by the junior high school students. The crosswalk that we, hopefully, we will be implementing, that crosswalk will be used twelve months of the year, because the field and the playground is used seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So I know the administration has, has, I don't want to use the word criticize, but it cautioned me about creating this crosswalk, but the crosswalk at Gansett in front of Bayne is only going to be used when there's a crossing guard attendant there and when the, when the school is open. This crosswalk, once, if implemented, will be used twelve months of the year.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
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 No. Yes.
Next, ordinance eight dash thirteen dash one, ordinance and amendment of Title Three, the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Revenue and Finance Tax Assessment Board of Review, as amended in Committee Ten Seventeen, Two Thousand and Thirteen.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Sido?
You mean, Councilman Stychos?
Oh, sorry, Councilman Stychos.
I'll be voting against this, because I don't think the Tax Assessment Board of Review is any more deserving of pay than many of the other boards that we have in the city. I do appreciate the efforts that were made in the drafting of this to prevent the abuses that came to light about three years ago of, by setting an annual salary and, and putting some alternates in, but I, I won't support it, because I just, I think we could spend nine thousand dollars in a better way. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. I like the new language in this ordinance that also limits the terms to six consecutive years on the Assessment Board of Review. I think actually, some of the members of the, of that organization recommended that, and I understand Councilman Stychos' long history of not wanting to spend money on this, but I think it's an area where we need qualified real estate appraisals, people with some serious experience, and I don't think you're going to get the qualified people you need in such an area that really could cost us a serious amount of money by making mistakes. So I will support it, and I think that, but I do like the fact that there's a cap on the amount of compensation, and also on the term, term limits, and I think that may allay some of Councilman Stychos' fears.
Council Vice President Farina?
Thank you, Council President. That was the intent when we drafted this ordinance, was to put oversight in the area of the Tax Assessment Board of Review, to put rules in place that were not in place prior, to ensure that there would be no abuse. With next year being a revaluation year, it's tantamount that we have qualified real estate appraisers in place to ensure that as we have issues with revaluations, we have people that can look and analyze this. So I would appreciate my colleagues in supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilman Akado?
Thank you, Council President. I'm supportive of this ordinance. I think to echo Councilman Vivekio's concerns, we do need professional, qualified members on this board, real estate appraisers. They deal with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue for the city and, and real estate that is worth millions of dollars. So we need men and women who know what they're doing. Also, you know, working either on the review board, school committee, city council, the hours we put in, the phone calls we take, the abuse once in a while we receive, it's a thankless position, and any, any stipend is welcome, in my opinion. So I'll be supporting this.
Councilman Senator Maria?
Thank you, Council President. On number three, if there's no person who shall serve more than six consecutive years on the Tax Assessment Board of Review, is that retroactive or will that start on, on passage of the ordinance? of the ordinance?
Prospective.
Prospective.
Going forward.
Going forward. So, the sixth mem, or the, I'm sorry, the five members of this board will serve till 2019?
Correct.
That's correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well.
Councilman Asido.
That's not completely true, though, Mr. Council President, because if they have a term that expires on a certain date, wouldn't they need to be reappointed? I mean, they currently are going on terms with a date specific.
Three years.
So, would it, would it happen prospectively on that date prospective, when they end?
Would you like to explain that? I'll get a legal opinion on that.
Thank you.
Okay, legislation has to be prospective, so it would be when they're up for reappointment is when you start the next term is where you'd count it. So, I think you're correct on that.
So, say, I'm on the board, my term ends January 1st, 2014, I would be able to serve two more three-year terms?
You would be able to, but again, the council doesn't have to reappoint them. You have the choice not to reappoint them if you feel that's the issue.
Right, I understand that, but I just, just for, since there's staggered appointment dates here.
Right.
It would be six years from whenever their date or the person was appointed on that date.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
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 Next, ordinance, Council President, eight dash thirteen dash three, ordinance amendment
of Title 9.8 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Offenses Relating to Property Tree Planting Back of Sidewalk Program as Amended in Committee 1017, 2003. Any to take a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion, Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Can I have the vote on this out of committee?
I believe there was only one dissenting vote, is that true, Councilman Stikos?
I think it was unanimous.
Was it unanimous? Okay.
Was what? Oh, okay.
There was one dissenting vote, correct?
There was a minute.
Vice President Farina, that's what I remember.
Councilman, through the chair, Councilman Farina, what were your concerns? If you don't mind me asking.
It was the issues that we had with the arborist and planting the trees within the sidewalk strip and having to get people's permission to go on their property. I just felt it would be a hassle to manage for the city, for the clerk's office. I didn't really think we had a good plan on how to get that done effectively.
You, Council President?
Councilman Stikos.
This proposal comes as a result of recommendations of a study of Cranston's forest and forest, including street trees, by the Rhode Island Tree Council and funded by the U.S. Forest Service. And in that report, the, it is recommended that the city establish a setback planting program for several reasons. One is that the, there isn't, generally in the tree strip, there's not enough room for the trees to thrive. Number two, they're really close to salt and sand in the winter and that damages them. And also, if they're set back under this ordinance, they become the responsibility of the homeowner. So, as a city, we get the benefit of trees on the street, but if, when the tree dies, we don't have to pay to have it removed, because it's on private property. And it, and the, as part of the agreement to get a tree, the property owner would sign an agreement saying that they recognized that the tree was their responsibility.
Councilman Farina.
Just to elaborate on why I was a note and count in the committee process, I love trees, the trees are great. My issue with the ordinance was that there are property line restrictions on where you could put a tree, it had to be eight feet away from someone's property. As properties change hands, someone has to keep those records, and I just didn't know if we had a process on approvals and who approved and how they approved, and I didn't want the city council or the city to get involved and spat between neighbors. That was my main concern with the ordinance.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. My concern is, the way it is now, the tree surgeon or tree arborist goes and ascertains if the tree's dangerous and then asks it to be cut down, now it's on private property, what if it's a dangerous tree, but the owner refuses to cut it down? Then it becomes kind of an issue. And if it falls on a city, if it falls on a car parked on the city street, who's responsible?
Councilman Stikos.
It would be the homeowner. It's the homeowner's tree. Just like now, if a tree, just the same thing, if a tree was planted in the front yard and it fell, it would be the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Aketo.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I think it's a good idea. Councilman Stikos is concerned about the aesthetics of Cranston. Also, the way that trees are planted currently on the sidewalk, they uproot the sidewalk, which causes the city a great deal of money to replace the sidewalk. But my concern is, if the tree, first of all, the money for the trees is budgeted, is that correct, Councilman Stikos? Is a line item, I would assume, for the tree, tree budget?
Well, there is a, there is a line item for planting trees, which is, but even if there wasn't, in this, I don't think that, this isn't a budgetary, doesn't have a budgetary impact.
I understand that, but who, who's going to incur the cost for the tree? Ultimately, it's the city, and there's going to be a line item for those trees.
Right, or the council could decide.
So, you don't expect to get our trees by either federal grants or donations, they're going to be paid for by the city through the budget?
They could be paid for with a grant, they could be paid for by donation.
Okay, so you're going to look for different avenues to get those trees? Not only budgetary means, but possibly through donations and grants?
Yeah, just like you and I worked with the Carbonato Corporation to get trees planted in parks in your ward.
So, the next question I have, the tree, which is paid for by the city, is planted on the person's private property. The tree grows and the roots of the tree now are growing and the roots, I think President, Council President Lanny brought this up in committee, the roots grow into the septic system. And we've got, we've got backup in the drains, we've got a problem in plumbing. Who incurs that cost? Because right now, the old, I think it's a 50-50, or depending whether, so far from the street or something, there's some type of method that they use.
Yeah, I think Mr. Quinlan and Mr. Kirschenbaum have worked on that more than I have and they'd be, give you a better answer than I would.
But as of, my concern is that if we do it this way, I would assume the resident would incur the cost, correct?
Yes, that's what I would assume, but maybe they could give you a little.
I would defer that to Mr. Kirschenbaum.
Yeah, so what, what is not in the body of the ordinance, but is referenced in the ordinance, is a, if we look online, 61, that there will be a consent form signed by the homeowner and he will in effect be relinquishing any claims he has against the city for anything that has to do with the growth of the tree, including sewer, septic, you know, any, any kind of issue that could, if it fell down, if it died, you know, these kind of things. So, to be an applicant in this program, you will first have to qualify, and the qualification process includes indemnifying the city for the use of the tree.
Thank you, thank you, Council Stikos, for answering my question.
Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Councilman Stikos as sponsor. Just, just out of curiosity, you have these two sections together, is that because you're anticipating the tree warden's going to remove a dead tree or a tree that's obstructing sidewalk and then they're going to replace that with this back of sidewalk program?
What do you mean the two sections together?
Well, you have 9.08.062 Notice Requirements for Removal and Pruning.
Oh, I see. So, could you state the question again?
So, is that, these are together in this, I'm just, just curious as to whether that's because they're tied to the fact that you're trying to, you know, remove some dead trees and/or trees that are causing problems on sidewalks, and then having the replacement program, obviously off of city property?
Short answer, no. Mr. Quinlan drafted it and, you know, I'm relying on his judgment. I think that, you know, the big picture is, we pay now $80,000 a year for tree removal and we have a $10,000 line item for planting of trees. And where the report lays out that there's a impending problem in the city, in that many of the trees, Norway maples in particular, are, that were planted, are getting of an age where they're going to die and, they're going to die and fall apart. And there isn't any replacement program, really, that we have going. So, the, we had a meeting with the advisor for the Rhode Island Tree Council, John Campanini, who was the city forester for the city of Providence, and he is recommending this setback program. Said they've done it in Providence, they've done it in Warren, and the example that he gave in Warren was the city, you could set it up a number of different ways, but what they did in Warren was, people applied, they said they wanted a tree, they signed the statement that they would be responsible for the tree, they made a little map of their property and put where they wanted to plant their tree, and then the city went through and reviewed those. And so, they, anybody who wanted to plant it in the backyard would be rejected, because it has to be in the view, what they call the view shed of, from the street. And they approved them, and then the city bought, I don't remember the number, but it was a large number of trees, and you could come and pick up the tree. And then the city went around and checked sometime later to make sure that people planted the tree where they said they were going to plant the tree. So, that was a way of getting a lot of trees planted relatively inexpensively in a short period of time. So, that, that was one thing that he recommended doing.
One follow-up question, if I may, Council President. So, I would assume, in following up with, I think it was Councilman Aketo's question about where the trees may be planted, if the homeowner's going to plant it on their property, they would have to take the responsibility of making sure they're not putting it on top of their septic system or near a pipe or something that could cause damage to their own property.
Well, right, there's also this service called DigSafe, where whenever you're going to dig, including planting a tree, you call them up and then Verizon comes out and Providence Water comes out and, and they mark where the various utilities are and where you can plant. So, that would be part of this process, like it is when anybody plants a tree.
I think it's well-written, I have no problem with it.
Council Vice President Farina.
Move the question.
Second.
Not debatable.
We have to vote on that.
Not debatable. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Next, ordinance, ordinance eight dash thirteen dash five, ordinance amendment of Title 10, Chapter 40 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Miscellaneous Traffic Regulations, No Tractor Trailer Parking on Cranston Street North Side Between Victoria Avenue and Dyer Avenue, Continued, September 12, 2003, motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved. Has been made in second, any discussion? Councilman Aketo.
Thank you, Council President Lanny. Yes, this was a request from the curator of the Sprague Mansion, saying that tractor-trailers were parked long durations of time in, in front of the Sprague Mansion, probably either having lunch at McShawn's or whatever. So, he felt it was ruining the aesthetics of the historical Sprague Mansion. So, I introduced this. Now, in no way does this prevent a truck or a tractor-trailer from parking to offload or load. They have that right, according to the traffic engineer, Mokee. It just prevents them from long durations of parking if they're going to stop for lunch or whatever. So, I recommend to the council that this passes.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Finance Committee, Chairman Stikos.
There's one more ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, continue.
President, Council President Lanny, eight dash thirteen dash six, I am going to pull that at the request of the administration and Mr. Quinlan saying that we don't need to pass this, because we passed eight thirteen dash five.
Finance Committee, Councilman Stikos.
We have some routine items here. We have resolution authorizing real estate and tangible tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor, with the exception of 79 Gladstone Street and 2206 Broad Street, and those two, we're just requesting further information on, we haven't rejected them, we just want to look at them before they're brought to the full council. So, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, under discussion. Administration, let me comment on this.
Thank you, Council President. This is for Councilwoman Lee. I've spoken to our tax assessor who was away, with those two abatements that you were inquiring about and we tabled, or actually the council tabled, that'll be up again for the next committee meeting, and he has explanations for those. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up that with those explanations, to me, it made sense that it should be approved, but I'll let you make that judgment.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Next, we have motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Next, we have motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Next, we have motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Next is the tax interest waiver approvals recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Councilman Asido.
Yes, through the chair, the Councilperson, it's supposed to be denials, correct?
No, these are the approvals and then the next one, next vote will be the denials.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes?
Yes.
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 And lastly, we have the denials of tax interest waivers as recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Safety Service and License Committee, Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Permission to take items one and three now, as we're going through executive session for the second item. There's no objections from the council.
I have no objections.
Because it's up.
Nobody objects, okay, fine. Take them out of water.
Okay, 9-13-5, ordinance amendment Title 5, the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Business Licenses, Tobacco and Electronic Smoking Devices. This is passed unanimously. Committee recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Councilman Vice President Farina.
I'd just like to thank the council and the city clerk for being so in the forefront of trying to inhibit smoking of, of smoking devices that are available to sale for minors. I think this is a great move in the right direction for us as a city, to say that, you know, we don't want the sale of all tobacco products to minors. So, I thank the council for supporting this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Class B vixwing alcoholic beverage license. This is new, needs full council approval. It's actually not above the cap because it's the old Fitzpatrick's pub, so it's just going into that slot. So, it won't change the cap number at the pub on Park Avenue. Committee met and recommends approval.
Motion been made?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Councilman Vice President Farina.
Through the chair, to the chair. Was Fitzpatrick's turned in?
Through the president to the clerk, did we send them a letter of Fitzpatrick's? They abated the property?
Yes, they were notified by certified mail. We had a meeting, we, the committee revoked it, we sent them certified notice, and they did receive that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
And Council President, last up, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246582, pending litigation, 2000 Sports Bar and Lounge, appeal of Safety Services Committee denial on October 7, 2013, of restrictions removal.
Motion been made, is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Executive session. Taking yours with you. This will be on until midnight again, anyway. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Motion been made in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to seal the minutes?
Motion to seal the minutes, second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Yes. Councilman Santa Maria.
We're going to entity a motion, right, Council President?
Council President, just by way of background, this was a hearing on the 2012 sports bars application to have an entertainment license under the new ordinance that the council just passed. It was, went before the committee, and I don't recall exactly what the vote was. It was five to three, but at that point in time, the committee did not approve the entertainment license. Subsequent to that, we asked the applicant whether or not she would want to appeal to the full council pursuant to the ordinance, and this is here tonight pursuant to their appeal before the full council. So, the issue is, under the, under the new entertainment ordinance, this is a, was a hearing regarding the restrictions.
I'd like to make a motion, Council President.
Councilman Botts?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to grant an entertainment license with restrictions that, like, they cannot have live entertainment after 10 o'clock on Sunday through Thursday, and no live entertainment after midnight on Friday and Saturday.
Second. Motion made and seconded, under discussion. Any discussion on this motion? Councilman Steikos.
I'm sorry, could you, it's 10 o'clock for live entertainment, Sunday through Thursday?
Yes.
And then, and then what about Friday and Saturday?
Uh, no live entertainment after midnight, so.
None after midnight?
On traditional.
On Friday and Saturday?
Right.
I'll second that.
I think Mario already seconded it.
We're under discussion at this time.
I have a.
Before we continue, I'd like the attorney for the applicant, if he has a few, anything to say. Mr. Pichorelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure I understand the structure of what this is being done tonight. On October 7, we did have a hearing before the Safety Services Committee. That hearing was held pursuant to an order of the State Department of Business Regulation requiring that the city adopts uniform standards to be, be applied uniformly throughout the city. And then to adopt those standards, have those standards approved by the department, and then to grant my client an opportunity to seek that the live entertainment restriction be removed based upon those new standards. The vote was four to three to deny that. We have appealed that to, as I'm sure you know, to the State Department of Business Regulation, again, in accordance with its decision. We were told that we had the opportunity to appeal it here as well, and as I understand that we're here tonight on that. I don't know whether you're going to grant us a hearing, or whether you're going to want to discuss it with us, or whether you've had your discussion already in executive session and you're just going to vote on the motion. But if you want to hear from us, if you want to hear why we believe that there should be no restriction at all imposed going forward, we'll be willing to answer any questions or explain opposition. If you don't want to hear from us, that's fine, too.
Who would you have speak on your behalf, Mr. Pichorelli?
I'm sorry?
Who do you have to speak on your behalf?
Well, I have the same person who spoke at the last hearing.
Okay.
Elisa Bessette, if you want to have her come forward.
Yes, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Okay. Again, just so I'm clear, I mean, there's been a motion made, a seconded, is a discussion. Are we proceeding under that discussion? Is that the nature of why we're here? Okay. Well, at this point, we'll just reiterate what we stated at the Safety Services Committee meeting. You have now passed these standards, so-called uniform standards, and we feel that there's no basis for any further restriction for treating this establishment any differently than any other establishment in the city. There have been no legitimate complaints made against the operation of this establishment over the last, how many years have it been operating? Two years? There was a period of time when we were operating under the assumption that there were no entertainment restrictions at all for a period of about six months. There were, again, no complaints during that period of time. And now, we're just, again, asking that we be treated fairly and in accordance with every other establishment in the city. Thought we had an understanding at some point during the last hearing, and some of the council members agreed that it would be appropriate to lift the restriction and hold us to the standard of any other establishment. If there are problems, if there are noise or other types of problems that this establishment would create, you treat them like anyone else, and you bring them before you on some type of violation hearing. But to impose the restriction in advance under the assumption that there's going to be problems is not fair. It's not uniform, it's not warranted. There was a motion made to ask that the restrictions be put in place for a earlier closing time. We pointed out that that would not be uniform, wouldn't be fair, and we wouldn't agree to that. There was a proposal made to limit the types of entertainment that would be in the establishment, and again, we indicated that that being of questionable constitutional permissibility to restrict the types of free expression that artists might have in the entertainment at the establishment. At that point, we were voted down four to three. We're confident that we'll get that overturned at the Department of Business Regulations. We'd ask you to stop the persecution, the unwarranted and unnecessary persecution of this business that's been going on for over two years now, and ask that they just be treated fairly like everyone else. We've done everything that we think is necessary. My client has a new, a new plan that she drew up that we'll submit at some point.
Point of information, point of information. I, I know the speaker spoke about fairly, but this is unprecedented that before a council meeting, that, you know, the council meetings interrupted, we allow this gentleman to present his case. But my, my question would be, is there a time limit on Mr. Pichorelli? All other speakers have a time limit. I was just wondering if there is a time limit.
No, there's no time limit. Mr. Pichorelli, who probably will speak for the next two hours, can continue.
Well, we did wait 45 minutes for you in executive session to talk about this, but they weren't giving me the opportunity to make a presentation in there. Again, we have a drawing of the establishment that we can submit that shows the fixed dance floor, the fixed seating, parking for 36 cars. We don't think there's any, anything remarkable in that that would prevent you from, from lifting the restriction. Again, no different than any other establishment in the city. So, again, I think most of the committee council members here probably have already made up your minds, but if you have any, if anybody who hasn't wants to ask us a question, we'd be happy to answer it.
Councilman Steikos.
So, your position is that the only way that the council should restrict a license is if there's a complaint about a business? That we should not consider the type of neighborhood, or the, the history of, of restaurants and bars and, and in a neighborhood, and what their, their impact has been?
Well, with regard to your second point, in regard to the history, I think the Department of Business Regulation has made it clear that you can't punish us for the sins of some prior owners, and.
No, I'm not talking about that speci, I'm talking about a general neighborhood, you know, general neighborhood problems with restaurants and bars, not prior owner or brother-in-law or whatever.
Again, we, we don't think we're in any different position than any of the other neighborhood bars in the city, none of whom had.
No, that wasn't my question. My question was, you seem to be saying that the only reason we could restrict a license as a council is if there was a complaint, or a series of complaints. Is that your position?
Well, again, I believe that that's how you've done it in the city in the past. Again, the only.
I'm asking you for your position, not how it's been done in the past. We haven't had an entertainment license in the past.
Well, again, if the entertainment, what, what would be the purpose of restricting the entertainment? Noise? You have a noise provision in your ordinance. You have a noise ordinance. I, I think when this whole process started two years ago, your solicitor and I had a colloquy in which we remarked that if you could be, noise can be created with a band, with computerized music, any number of ways. If the issue is one of noise, you deal with the noise.
Mr. Council President, I think you opened it up for questions. I've asked Mr. Pichorelli a question, and I'm getting, you know, I want an answer to my question. And my question is, again, is it your position that the only reason that the council could restrict, put restrictions on an entertainment license is if there are complaints? Is that your position?
I, I, again, if you want to have uniform restrictions, I think the department has indicated you need to have uniform restrictions. If you can give, if there is a uniform and reasonable basis that you're applying to every establishment in the city, if you're going to have every establishment in the city close, not have entertainment after 10 o'clock, then I think that would be appropriate. But to treat us differently than any other establishment without any basis in fact is not uniform, and it's not fair, and it's not reasonable.
So, I'm going to take that as a yes.
Is that, I would like to know that, too, because that was a yes or no answer.
Councilman Farina.
You know, I was under the opinion that the Safety Services and Licensing Committee and the City Council can limit the hours of operation on any establishment at any time. We can limit the hours of entertainment as well. That is one of the main powers of the Safety Services and Licensing Committee, of which I sit. And we, at any time, can decide if an applicant comes before us to restrict the hours of operation that they have, and the same goes for their entertainment license. And you made a comment that we were restricting the hours of operation for this establishment. We in no way, shape, or form are changing the closing time of this establishment. We are trying to set forth hours and watch you can have live entertainment. If you had live entertainment, in Council, in Bott's example, you'd have live entertainment until 10 o'clock at night on weeknights, and 12 o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays, but your hours of operation would still remain till 1:00 in the morning. That's something that your lawyer has said as a statement that is not true, so I just wanted to clarify that.
If I could respond, I respectfully suggest that you're, that the decision of the Department of Business Regulation states that the city of Cranston shall adopt objective standards to impose entertainment restrictions or prohibitions on a Class B license to be applied uniformly to all licensed facilities. If you're going to have a standard, it has to be applied uniformly. And to, so therefore, to have, to say that, you know, closing times, or to end times for entertainment, those stand, you have to adopt a standard as to this closing time or that the end time, which is not in your ordinance, there's nothing in your ordinance that talks about that, and it has to be reasonable, there has to be some basis for it, other than. And it has to be reasonable, there has to be some basis for it, other than, you could make it seven o'clock at night. Why ten o'clock? What is the, what is the reasoned basis, factual reasoned basis, to limit it to ten o'clock?
We haven't had any discussion on whether we will or will not limit the hours.
But that's the motion that was made, that's all I can address.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We haven't had any discussion on whether we will or will not, and we haven't had any debate on the floor on why we would limit the hours. So, you got up after Councilman Bott's made his motion, so we have not vetted the motion yet. So, we still need to go through the legislative process and vet the motion.
Well, this is a quasi-legislative and quasi-judicial process. This is an appeal. It's like, it's an appeal in court, the way I look at it. So, I'm trying to present a case as an appeal, I'm not trying to make a legislatively argument. I understand you're doing two different things at the same time, and that can be a little confusing, even for lawyers. But what I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to present a case as an appeal. And, and, you know, we weren't even, we, you know, we've been sitting in the audience for two hours. You have an executive session, you come out and you make a motion, and there's no, there's no indication about an appeal, or a hearing, or how the hearing is going to be conducted, or anything. So, I don't, I understand we're all trying to get our rules, you know, trying to figure out what we're doing here, but if I just sat there and didn't respond to the motion, I think I would be derelict in my duty.
On the matter of your appeal, let's handle that first. The appeal's before us. Is there a motion?
I'll withdraw.
First, we go, withdraw Mr. Bott's, Councilman Bott's motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
We'll handle the appeal first. Is there a motion?
I think that before, just in fairness to everyone, that before we got into this colloquy of interpretation, legislative interpretation, that Mr. Pichorelli's client stood up to speak to the committee, and after all, it's her appeal, so I would want her to address the council if she saw fit.
I mean, I think at this point, I would leave it to, we had a hearing where seven of the nine members were present. If the other two members or any of the other members want to ask my client some questions, she's more than happy to answer him. I just don't want to delay this anymore with having her go over the same things I'm saying.
Before we get to the question, Mr. Pichorelli, do you have any other witnesses who you'd like to bring forward? I noticed the applicant's father is here and maybe the landlord, I don't know, if they're here to testify or not. Okay, I just don't want to foreclose your opportunity.
Councilman Lucido.
Yes, because this is an appeal process, I'd be able to ask our solicitors a question concerning the process.
Yes.
Okay, so, let's just take a step back here, okay? We're ruling on what hours they can have entertainment in the establishment as we have to do to any other establishment in the city that has entertainment, correct?
Okay, I don't think I can answer that yes or no, so let me try.
Okay.
Okay, let me, let me try to explain as best as I can.
I guess, we went, the appeal's something we did.
This applicant does not have an entertainment license. They're applying for an entertainment license.
Which we're going to order on tonight.
The committee, in my opinion, this is where Mr. Pichorelli and I differ, is the interpretation of our ordinance, is that what I think is, that our ordinance has to be applied uniformly in terms of its standards. It does not have to be applied uniformly in terms of the result. So, the standards may be different in an industrial zone than a residential zone. So, when you apply the factors and the testimony that, that was heard throughout this about the neighborhood and whatever, you may decide that differently than another particular bar. I think what Mr. Pichorelli is saying is, he's using the form, using the word uniformly to mean a cookie cutter approach that all bars have to end at a certain hour. I think that the, what was the decision of DBR was that we didn't have objective standards. If it were the case that we had to have a uniform closing hour, I think DBR could have just said, "All bars in Cranston have to close at one." You know, no more of that.
To the chair. What's DBR said about how we did the ordinance? What have they said? Have they commented on that?
I've heard nothing negative from DBR about the ordinance. I've heard that it was accepted. I don't have anything written to that effect, but, you know, Pat and I heard that it was accepted.
So, as a, as a committee and a council, we have the ability for any establishment, as Council Vice President Farina said, to limit certain things, whether it's hours of operation or what they can do, correct?
I think, I mean, I think that's a broad statement, but as it relates to this particular area, I think you do. There are specific areas of licensing that are preempted under state law, but, you know, we don't want to get into a discussion over that.
Councilman, Vice President Farina.
To the chair, to the solicitor.
The, the motion, if the committee, and I heard the motion, so I'm not going to ignore it, but I'm using it as an example, not, not instructive. But if the committee were to want to grant this applicant an entertainment license in some fashion, they would make a motion to rule to overturn the committee's decision of a denial and rule in favor of the appeal, in favor of the appellant and the appellee. And, and then propose what you think is reasonable under the standards articulated in the ordinance.
Can you repeat that, please?
The motion would be to sustain the appeal, in fact, overrule the committee's denial of the entertainment license, and to impose upon the license, as you see fit, in accordance with the ordinance, what restrictions, if any, you like.
Is that a two-step process? Where we would first, so it's one?
Well, I mean, the motion, a motion to grant them any entertainment would necessarily be a motion to overturn.
No, do we need to sustain the appeal first and then have motions on?
No.
Okay.
Councilman Lucido.
Well, I was going to make a motion to sustain the appeal, but it's not a two-step process, so if I sustain the appeal, and we could propose whatever the hours of operations or restrictions we wanted, is that correct?
To overturn. You have to move to overturn.
Wait a second, we'll get an answer, please.
I, I think procedurally, what you need to do is withdraw the previous motion and second, and then.
We did, we already did that.
Okay, and then the, the next step is to make a motion to sustain the appeal to the, of the denial, and grant an entertainment license on whatever terms you have the power to do, so it can be all in one motion.
It can, but it doesn't have to be, right?
Right, I, I think it's a preferable way to have it all in one. It should, I, my opinion should be one motion.
But if you did that and somebody didn't agree, I'm sorry, Mr. President, but if you did that and somebody didn't agree with the hours of operation, then they would.
Have to have another vote.
It would be, it would be a vote, and the, the appeal would die too, correct?
It has, that's why I suggest it should be in one motion. That the appeal is sustained, and that the council imposes whatever it chooses to impose in terms of hours or any restrictions, if any.
Councilman Botts.
If, if that first motion is denied, you don't get one shot of doing this, you can reintroduce a new motion to sustain the appeal and then enter in a new?
Correct, you could do it that way.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions for the applicant standing there?
If I can just make one other point, I was reminded by the building owner that this property is in a commercial zone, so to suggest that you're going to restrict the hours based upon its, the neighborhood concept of it would be belied by your own zoning ordinance.
Any other questions for, for Mr. Pichorelli? I might remind you that ten feet beyond that commercial zone, the neighborhood property is residential, and so is the rest of the street. All right, let's deal with the, the motion of the appeal. Is there a motion? On the matter of the appeal, is there a motion?
So moved. Moved to sustain.
Motion made to sustain, is there a second? To sustain the appeal, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion concerning the appeal? Councilman Sina Maria.
Just to be clear, a yes vote will sustain the appeal, and no vote will support the commit, support the committee's original decision.
Sustain the appeal would be to overrule the committee's original.
A yes vote would overrule this, the committee's decision, and no vote would agree with the committee's decision.
Correct.
Any other discussion, Councilman Stakos?
Yeah, a question for the sponsor of the motion to sustain. Is it your intention, if it passes, to then propose another motion that would, would set limits on this license? It is?
I can set the limits in the initial motion if you'd like.
I don't have a strong preference, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, clear, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes. No.
Six to three.
I'd like to make a motion to grant entertainment license to the applicant, the hours of operation ending for the entertainment license at eleven PM, Sunday through Monday.
Motion been made.
Sun, every night, Sunday through Monday, eleven PM, seven days a week.
Motion has been made, is there a second on the motion?
Uh, Monday through Sunday, I said it backwards.
Councilman Lucido seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Can we repeat that motion again, please?
The motion is, grant entertainment license to end every day at eleven PM.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I, I just, okay, thank you. I was just thinking that, the, the, I was going to propose an hour later on the weekends, just to. Okay, so I won't, I don't have to, okay, no, I just want, that's it, thank you.
Councilman. Y'all done, Councilman?
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
On, on Mr. Pichorelli's issues on the, or the way he's looking at the way, the ordinance, and I just feel like the ordinance allows us to sort of structure the businesses to fit the uniqueness of the, of the neighborhoods and the, all of Cranston isn't the same. Every street, every neighborhood, every section is a little bit different, so by structuring the hours of operation and different things like that, we can't, it doesn't make sense to make them across the board. This allows us to accommodate the, the area in, in a more tailored way, and I think it's a, it's a better way.
Mr. President, can I respond to that, or is that? Are you all done? Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, I had, I had some comments, Council President. I agree with Councilwoman Lee on the weekend issue. I actually thought Councilman Bott's first motion, which Councilman Lucido had seconded, was, was pretty fair as well. I mean, I think that this one actually provides more hours during the week than, than the prior motion. But knowing that Friday and Saturday are the most, are the busiest times for most places, I, I would, I would move to amend the, the motion to Councilman Bott's original motion, which was ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and midnight on Friday and Saturday. I would offer that as a friendly amendment.
Motion been made, and there's a second on the motion. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Favecchio, for the friendly amendment. You know, I don't sit on Safety Services, but I did happen to attend some of the meeting as this was going on, and, you know, there are, there are a lot of issues going on here. And ultimately, what I see is that we do have an establishment that wants to have live entertainment in a neighborhood that, if you look on a Google map and, or go over there, there are houses directly abutting the property, and there have been issues in the past. As Councilwoman Lee said, you know, there are uniquenesses to the different neighborhoods within Cranston, and, you know, each and every business doesn't operate in a vacuum. There is things surrounding the property that makes every single entity a different case, I think that comes before us, and they will be coming before us with this new ordinance that DBR forced us to do. That being said, I would, you know, again, I would like to see a business be successful in that area, and of course, be friendly to the neighborhood, and also not be a nuisance. And things like the noise ordinance that was brought up, sure, you could have someone sitting out there with a meter twenty-five feet from the premises and try and see if we're over the, whatever the limit is for this business, but that doesn't take into account other things. It doesn't take into account motorcycles, that as soon as they rev up and they're out of there, that noise meter isn't going to make much of a difference. Or cars idling at a certain time of night. And I think the restriction and the friendly amendment that Councilman Favecchio proposed, my original one before I withdrew, I think it takes into account the certain things. Ten, at ten PM, you can't have live entertainment after ten PM on what traditionally would be a work night, I think is fair. And, again, midnight on Friday and Saturday, which is a traditional busy night where bars, pubs, and whatever tend to really kind of make their, their money on those nights. So, I think it is a fair proposal, and I would, I would support it. Thank you.
Councilman Vice President Farina.
Yeah, the reason I made it eleven was because not every person works Monday through Friday. There are people who work third shift, second shift, first shift, and I felt eleven o'clock every night would make more sense if this council would like to vote on, on ten, Sunday through Thursday, and then eleven, twelve o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays. I don't think I can support midnight on Fridays and Saturdays due to the proximity of the neighborhood, but I welcome the, the comments from my colleagues.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President Lanny. I can't support the amendment. I am familiar with the neighborhood. It's a blue-collar area, working class district. People, I think, need their downtime, quiet time to have rest and sleep so they can get, get up early to go to work the next morning, so I don't think midnight on Friday and Saturday is fair to the community, and I will not be supporting this amendment.
Councilman Stakos.
First, I, I just want to say that I, I do support some kind of hour restrictions for the reasons that Councilwoman Lee has stated. I have a ward that has same kind of situation with, with bars adjoining neighborhood areas, I have a ward that has the same kind of situation with bars adjoining neighborhood areas, and I don't get complaints about, for instance, latitudes generally because they are further away from residential homes than, than, what's that place called, Powers, which is right next door, and I have the person, a couple people next door, and I believe it's an apartment building, tell me that the minute the window opens, the minute the door opens, I get a blast of noise. So I think we do have to tailor these entertainment licenses to the specifics of each applicant that comes before us. I do have a question for Councilman Santa Maria, because I know you've dealt with this situation. What is your opinion of the hours that Councilman Vivekio is proposing, the 12:00 o'clock on Friday and Saturday and the 10:00 the other nights? Is that something you find to be?
I really would rather have the 11:00 rather than the 12:00. I mean, I would like to speak to the neighbors about it, I mean, I think that...
You'd rather have the 11:00?
I mean, we're talking about it like we live next door to this place, and we really don't, you know, the neighbors do, but it's, there's two motions on the floor now, from what I'm hearing. There's the 11 across the board, and then there's the 10 and the 12, so the 10 and the 12 is before us?
No. We're dealing with the amendment at this point in time, 10 to 12.
Okay.
All right, but when you said you'd rather have 11, did you mean 11 across the board or 11 on Saturday and Sunday?
I'd much rather have 10. I mean, that's just my opinion, I'd rather have 10. I mean, this is up to the body to decide. I've been straightforward with how I feel about, the live entertainment just doesn't fit in that neighborhood.
All right, but, so of the two proposals here, what is your recommendation on Councilman Vivekio's motion? Will you be voting for it?
I wouldn't support, to be honest with you, I will not support either of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
So back to the original motion by Council Vice President Farina, 11 to 11, 11:00, seven days a week. Any discussion, further discussion on this particular motion? Councilman Stakos?
Yes, question for Councilman Santa Maria. Would you rather that it be 10:00 Monday to, Sunday to Thursday than 11:00?
You're saying Sunday to Thursday, 10:00, Friday, Saturday, 11:00?
Right.
And that would be entertainment?
Yes.
Uh, no.
No, you wouldn't?
I wouldn't support it either.
You wouldn't rather it be?
I think, I keep kind of splitting hairs here, so, I'd say no, I would support it.
So you'd rather go with a straight 11?
I actually voted to sustain the original denial, so I'm gonna stick with that.
Okay. Could I ask the same question of Council President Lanny? Do you have an opinion on?
I voted to deny also. I was a former Fifth Ward Councilman, I represented to those people. I know the problems we had in the past. When you have residential homes, a budding, and I mean really a budding, no space in between, and 40 by 80 lots, a budding, a nightclub, you have problems. I understand we have to compromise, but the compromise that I see 11 to 11, I will vote no on it. Councilman Farina?
Yeah, I think we're splitting hairs at this point. I think we should probably vote on the 11 to 11. I mean, trying to keep this fair and impartial, and I think any one specific Councilman will vote on the issue does not really relate on how each of us should vote. We should probably vote our own consciences on what we think and what we feel.
Councilman Arquero?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. I'm torn here because, on one hand, I want to support the neighborhood and the constituents of Cranston. Also, we need to encourage business and allow business to flourish, so this is a difficult vote, and it's my recommendation that 11, seven days a week, is reasonable. I think it's reasonable, and I think we need to give the business the opportunity to flourish and prosper and wish them luck and encourage them to pursue their endeavors. However, if they violate the restrictions, then they'll come before the Safety Services Committee, am I correct? That's what will happen. So I'm going to support the 11, seven days a week.
Councilwoman Lee?
I, I'm in agreement with Councilman Arquero, and I just wanted to reiterate that you were saying about, you know, if they do, you know, violate the agreement, then they would come up again and they would risk having the license completely stripped away, so I had also a question. If there were complaints by the neighbors that the noise was loud and that the parking was obstructive, is that reason to review the license as well? Does anybody else?
We could always, the Safety Services Committee, if there's any possible violations of the license, can have a show cause hearing, bring these people back in, and bring in whether police reports or any other evidence that you have that they violated the agreement and the restrictions, and we could fine or terminate the license.
Okay, so that is important to note. Thank you.
Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. I think Councilman Farina's proposal was very similar to mine, so that there's, we really are splitting hairs. So actually, I think you're giving more hours to them in the course of a week than I, than Councilman Nabbat and I and Councilman Asido were, so I don't think it's a bad proposal. I think because of the nature of that street, and even though it's a commercial property, it's abutted by many smaller homes too. It's not like even areas in my ward where there may be slightly larger lots, and then if you go out to Western Cranston with some of my colleagues, they have half-acre, one-acre parcels and bigger, so it's not as much of a problem. But in this area, it's, I know we have, we can't treat, we can't blame this applicant for sins of the past, but it's the nature of that community that makes it difficult to control traffic noise and littering, et cetera. So I think I'm gonna, I favor voting in favor of this proposal because I think at least it gives the applicant an opportunity to operate and to make money, and we normally are a very business-friendly community, and I think that we should at least give them an opportunity, and I think this is a good one.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. We're gonna vote on the 11:00 closing time, seven days a week.
Point of information, 11:00 entertainment ending time.
Oh, yeah, entertainment, I'm sorry, entertainment time, PM rather than AM. Clerk, please take the roll.
Uh, yes.
No. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Passes, six to three. Motion's approved, six to three, I believe. Moving on to the Claims Committee. Councilman Lee?
Oh, claims, I'm sorry. Okay. There you go. So to report on the settled claims, we had Dolores Cambra, Cambria Bron, is that good enough? $160 for personal injury. Andrea Subriana, $164.18 for personal property damage. Nancy Hilton, $51.36 for property damage. Robert A. Felix, $1,250.39 for property damage. Stephen and Donna Mancini, $2,159.21 for property damage. Renee Ikutu, $159.31 for property damage, and that is it.
Moving on to public hearings. Are there anybody, member of the public, who'd like to speak on any doctored or undocumented items? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
No, it's not on.
Press the button, press the button.
Okay, my name is Virginia. Virginia Kowal, K-O-W-A-L, 45, Kimberly Lane North in Cranston. I am really sorry to even bother you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, President. I have left printed material for all of the members of the City Council today. I'm not sure that you have had a chance to read them, but basically, I have been fighting a matter since 2009 when I discovered that the home I had purchased in 2003, after a revow, some things were added to the home, and I was not able to see the errors, and that's kind of a long story. But I have been trying to recover my overpayment of taxes for a period of between three and five years, of between $3,000 and $5,000. And the laws pertaining to valuation and taxpayers' ability to complain about their tax valuation, I don't feel apply. I feel the law that applies to me in my situation is Rhode Island State Law 44-3-1, which states real and personal property subject to taxation, all real property in the state and all personal property belonging to the inhabitants of the state, with other clauses there about other things that don't apply, are liable to taxation unless otherwise specifically provided. In other words, taxation is determined by ownership. I was taxed for things that I don't own, that are actually, I believe, in the home across the street from me, and I have spoken with some of the members of the City Council who have tried to help me and have unable to receive any help. So I'm here in person to ask if there's any way that the City Council could discuss my matter at their leisure and vote on my matter to see if I could somehow recover my overpayment of taxes. I believe the city of Cranston violated state law when they charged me for property that I do not own, that is in fact owned by someone else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirshenbaum, Solicitor. Is there a state law saying that if the city inadvertently taxes somebody for other people's property, they get a refund?
I'd have to look that one up. In my past research, I understood that the appellate period was one year back on...
Yeah, I understand the recovery period on your own property is one year if there's a mistake.
Right.
But if you've been inadvertently taxed for somebody else's property in addition to your own property, that's not the same thing.
It's not a question I'd want to answer on the spot. I'd certainly look it up.
Yeah, can you look it up and maybe get the tax assessor?
Can we make a suggestion, and maybe if it's okay with the chairman of Finance Committee, we'll give all parties enough time to research everything, and we can take it up at the Finance Committee meeting?
Excellent idea, Councilman Asido.
If it's okay with the chairman.
All right, what we're gonna do is have the Solicitor, have the tax assessor, meet with the Finance Committee and go over your claim, and if there's any way that you've been taxed for other people's property inadvertently, we'll do our very best to rectify this situation for you.
Thank you. Is there anything I should do further, or will I hear from someone?
I think we best, Mr. Kowal, if you showed up at that Finance Committee meeting, so that way there, as we're discussing the fact, if there's any questions or anything, we can direct them right to you, or if you have any questions, you can direct them to the Committee or members of the Administration.
Thank you. Will it be the next Finance Committee meeting, and when is that?
It's November 14th at 6:30.
November 14th.
Councilman Stakos?
Could I just ask Mr. Kirshenbaum if he feels he'd be ready by November 14th?
I think I should be ready to discuss it by that point.
Okay, then could I also ask that it be placed first on the agenda? Okay, thank you.
Be on the November 14th agenda?
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? Hearing none. Public hearings are now closed. Elections of city offices? Are there any elections of city offices?
We weren't getting answers to our letters, to them. We had approached them regarding different scenarios, one being the money and one being the terms of exit, and we didn't get sufficient answers on either of them, in fact, no answer at all. So, being the fact that we were being ignored, we filed a lawsuit in Providence Superior Court, and I have copies for everyone that I brought tonight. I don't know if they were passed yet, okay. If anyone has any questions about that, I can answer privately.
Our report on hiring a special counsel? Does the Administration have to report?
Nothing on special counsel, but there is a request for an extension of service.
Yes, continue.
Cranston Fire Department Lieutenant Walter Krbowski has requested a continuation in service. Lieutenant Krbowski has made all the necessary requirements, and we urge your approval.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Have an item settled by the Solicitor's Office? Is that just informational or is that on the record? Informational. On the Council President Communications? Couple of things to say. At this point, it's a 1-1 tie at the World Series between the Red Sox and the Yankees, sixth inning. Oh, St. Louis. You can tell I'm a Red Sox fan, everything's, I hate his Yankees. Also, it's about time the city of Cranston sued Rhode Island Resource Recovery. This has been going on since I was a Fifth Ward Councilman, and it's long overdue, and let's get this straightened out once and for all. The other comment I want to make is... The other comment I want to make is Councilman Arquette's resolution as far as Oakwood Avenue and Dean Parkway. Those people suffered, and the only people that came to their aid was American Red Cross and the City of Cranston. There wasn't one state official on the scene that I know of. The state should have some responsibility. They have no problem asking for taxes from its residents, but somehow, when you ask them for something, just to be available, they all seem to disappear. It's not a good way to run the state of Rhode Island, it's not a good way to run any kind of government. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Communications, any Councilmember would like to s-? Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. Just want to inform the members of the Council that it came to my attention, I think through the Cranston Herald, that the Cranston School Committee unanimously passed pay, a pay increase for school administrators. And I just have a couple of questions I'd like to direct to Mr. Strom or the Administration based upon that salary increase. I would like to know for the next Finance Committee meeting or next council meeting, I'd like to see the figures, the amount of the pay increase, is that possible for you to ascertain?
Per individual councilman?
Or as a total? The total, the total increase.
I think it's stated it was about 60-some-odd thousand in the Cranston Herald.
My next question would be, is that going to affect the basic maintenance of effort, meaning would that increase the next fiscal year on our side, on the city's side?
To be very candid with you, as far as I'm concerned, it won't, because they gave a raise on their side does not mean that I have to fund it. I believe what they're doing is they're taking it from another bargaining unit, if I understand correctly, and it's an offset. So where they had savings on some negotiations, they're backfilling for these raises.
So they saved in one area of the budget, and they, the savings they applied to another area. But I'd like you to find out if that's going to affect...
Yes.
Because technically, there's an increase of 60, $67,000, and I'd like to know if it's going to affect the maintenance of effort formula when we convene to appropriate their money the next fiscal budget. Thank you, Bob. I just want to end with a statement. I think the School Committee has, in the last several years, complained to the Council about not having middle school sports, the gifted program, and I think several members came to the chamber when Councilman Stychos proposed the 10-cent tax increase. They're advocating constant tax increases, and yet they're not watching their budget. So I'm just a little upset when they complain about not having middle school sports and gifted programs, and I think they're essential, I think we need that. And I want to commend Council President Lanny for his loan to the School Committee, his loan to their budget, and hoping that they repay that until they can establish more programs.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes, could I, just to follow up on what Councilman Arquette was requesting, I would like the total and by person, because I received a phone call today saying that the Herald article was inaccurate. So I don't know whether it's accurate or not, but I would be interested in both the total and the by, the per-person amount.
Can I just say one thing, Councilman, that when I saw the article in the paper was the first time I was aware of it. So I need to do a little research myself. It wasn't something that they discussed with us at all from the Administration.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Seado?
Yes, two quick questions to follow up on, Councilman Stychos and Councilman Arquette. Do their administrators have a contract? Do we know? Or are they just there and they can do whatever? Because if they do have a contract, I believe there's an ordinance on the books saying that any increases or contracts have to be approved by the City Council. If they don't have a contract, it's a moot point.
I don't believe they do. I think Councilman Stychos and Councilman Arquette would know better, but I think it just has to be approved before the School Committee.
Is that true? Councilman Bott?
Through the chair to Mr. Strom. I know there's been talk of surplus on the school's side this year. So this is in no way being funded, you said, by the surplus, but probably by the, you said it was an offset. And I noticed in the new business tonight, we have a secretarial contract coming before us to be ratified in the next month or so. So you think that's going to be where the offset is coming from, possibly?
Yeah, that's my understanding. My understanding is where they had some concessions on the secretarial contract, and don't forget, this is for 2014.
Right.
The surplus is for 2013, just keep that in mind. But it was an offset, that they had some extra money to pay the administrators, and that's why they waited till this point in time, rather than proposing it at the time of the budgetary process.
Great, thank you. Councilman Stychos?
Just to answer, or give a little information on Councilman Seado's question, do they have a contract? The administrators used to have a contract, like we think of a labor contract, that covered, there was one that covered the certified administrators, the principals and the vice principals, and then there was another one that covered the non-certified people, the director of busing, or the... That was eliminated, and then administrators were given individual contracts. So that's the, you know, that's, information is what I know as of three years ago, since then I...
So, Mr. Chairman, so technically, so if it's a contract, doesn't our ordinance say that, no, just teachers' contracts?
Since I was the sponsor of that original ordinance that went for referendum, it's only to deal with unions, collective bargaining units. We have to ratify any union contract that comes out of the school side of the budget.
So could we...
But administrators are non-union, we have no control over that.
So we couldn't put an amendment to the ordinance to say...
They have to go for referendum again.
Would it?
It's in the charter.
I have one more question, Mr. President.
Yes.
To Director Strom, would it be possible for the next Finance meeting to get a copy of all the non-exempt property holders in the city? Is that probably already some, I know you're shorthanded down there.
Well, no, I've already, I started working on that. And when, I just want to review with Tax Assessor Sakosha, and once, he'll be back November 4th, so I feel confident I should have something for you by then.
Thank you. Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. I just, I would be amiss if I didn't also mention the cuts in the music program in the City of Cranston. I want to applaud the efforts by Basics, and I know the organization group has done wonders raising money to buy instruments and wardrobe for the great bands we have at Cranston East, Cranston West, and at the junior high schools. So I think there is a need in our school system for music programs, for middle school sports, for gifted programs, and I think they should take precedent over administrative salaries. Thank you.
Any other, Councilman Bott?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. Over the past two weeks, it's been a pretty busy time in Ward II with a bank robbery and apparently a shootout on Reservoir Avenue. And I'd just like to commend the Cranston Police Department for the work in catching the bank robber who happened to also live in Ward II, and for also quickly seeming to get a, I don't know if they called apprehending, but they got a, brought in a suspect in the shooting on Reservoir Ave as well. So great, kudos to them, great job, as usual. And also, further expounding upon Councilman Arquette's remarks about the raises for the administrators, I just think it would be reprehensible to give raises to administrators on the backs of the people that really, truly run the schools in this city. If you deal with any of the school secretaries in whatever elementary or middle, middle school, or even the high schools, they are, if not the jury principal of the school, but they are the right-hand man to the principal. And I just think it's very poor that, to see concessions from the secretaries and this contract coming before us to ratify, when in fact they're turning around and giving that to many people that make, you know, six-figure salaries in the city. So, and again, you know, with the cuts to elementary music, and, you know, now we're seeing the results of that by the Cranston East Band numbers being down, and the cuts to Epic, which was the gifted program, and the cuts to middle school sports, which we'll probably never see again now that other school systems kind of followed suit in that. But, you know, to get these programs back would be great, and I would urge the School Committee with whatever surplus they have to pay back the loan as quickly as possible and so we can get these programs back in the schools. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
I agree that we should do what we can to reinstate the sports, the middle school sports and the music programs that have been cut, and the gifted and talented. I think those are really important, but I think we're forgetting something that has happened recently, and an added job that's been given to the principals in the schools. They have been doing a lot of extra work with the evaluations and the, I guess, I forget what they're called, they're... Is it, no, it's not kneecap, it's, they have to evaluate every teacher, and I know from talking to our principal, it has been taking them hours, so it's just been an extra thing to, I know that it's been taking them out of school. I think it's, wouldn't be bad to give them a little extra for the extra time that they've been putting in for that, that job. Thanks.
General discussion on this, I can see. Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. I don't want to belabor the point, however, I think Councilman Bott did hit on a very important point. For the last several years, the School Department has literally taken concessions from secretaries, the bus drivers, bus monitors, custodians, year after year, they've been squeezed and they've been giving back. So I think they should make that across the board. I mean, how can you ask one union to give up so much, and then in turn, you're increasing the salaries of six-figure individuals? I don't see the justice there, and I, I'm really, really disappointed in the School Committee's actions.
Councilman Favecchio?
I won't belabor this point, I'm not going to even make a comment on it, Council President, I'm just going to mention that we had, in my ward, we had a crime watch meeting at Cranston West for Ward Six, and it went very well. And I would suggest if anyone wanted to, ask the police to do that in their ward. It's a very informative, they did a tremendous job with the command staff explaining everything they do, and explained how they're dealing with some burglaries and some other issues besides the shooting and everything else that they've had. And I found that it was very informative, a lot of people showed up and a lot of questions were answered, even off-topic, but it was very worthwhile.
Anybody else? I'm a councilman, so I'm going to make a comment. We don't want to end this right away. Referring to the School Committee, I've read the Cranston Herald article, and the first thing that went to my mind was the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. Unions that represent janitors and secretaries gave up an awful lot. Administrators, or not even union, and most of them have six-figure salaries, cut richer. There's no justice. Before you increase anybody else's salary, give back to the people who gave to you to get you out of a hard time. Not forget them and just give salary increases to administrators. What they did was wrong. I'm not on the School Committee, but from what I read and what I saw and what I've heard, they were wrong. End that conversation. Old business. Is there any old business?
There is none.
Introduction of new business. Would the City Quirk please read the new businesses?
The first resolution listed is not going to proceed, that's being withdrawn, so it is not being introduced. The resolution urging the mayor to reinstate the 50-50 sidewalk program is to be referred to Finance Committee for hearing on November 14th. Proposed ordinance 10-13-01, an amendment of Chapter 12.20 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Parks and Recreational Facilities for a Dog Park, to be referred to Public Works for hearing on November 4th. Proposed ordinance 10-13-02, ratifying the School Committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Council 94, the Cranston Public School employees, Local 204, for the school secretarial unit to be referred to Finance for hearing on November 14th. Rhode Island Resource Recovery's appeal of the Department of Public Works Director's decision on their petition for review of modification to Industrial Waste Water Discharge Permit Number 1808 to be referred to Public Works for hearing on November 4th. A joint poll location request from National Grid and Verizon for Ken and Walnut Grove, and also one for Cranston Street, both to be referred to Public Works for hearing on November 4th. We have two claims, Lucy Arenas, a property damage claim from an alleged incident on July 15, 2013, and Dean Vose, a property damage claim from alleged incident on September 2, 2013, both to be referred to Claims Committee for hearing on November 4th.
Okay. Is there a motion to refer all matters? As read by the City Clerk? Motion been made? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes, Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
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 Yes. The Selenius Business on the Quirk's desk?
We have a mayoral nomination of Susan Stenhouse as Director of Senior Services. This is being advertised and referred to Finance Committee for a public hearing on November 14th.
All right, the City Council's next regular monthly meeting will be held Monday, November 25th. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.